of the parish community park in District One and the substantial expansion of this premier sports complex. Notably, our forthcoming vision, a Veterans Memorial Park and Veterans Village, will stand as a tribute to deep gratitude we hold for those who have sacrificed so much for our great country. Here's to more goals, more touchdowns, and more smiles right here in the premier place to live, work, and play.
From increasing the pay for those who keep us safe, to a new site for the Manti County Sheriff's Office Aviation Unit, additional substations, and a new fleet facility, our commitment to your safety is unmatched. But there's more that we can do. We are working with the Manti County Sheriff's Office and local businesses to illuminate underlit neighborhoods with wide up Manatee. And leveraging AI traffic preemption technology with our own Public Works Department to dramatically improve EMS response times. From bolstering law enforcement, implementing advanced technology countywide, to fostering safer neighborhoods on a localized level, Manti County and the Board of County Commissioners are committed to a vision that is focused on your well-being.
As our county continues to grow and evolve, the heart of our urban core holds immense potential for progress and prosperity. That's why we're prioritizing and expediting requests for affordable housing development and taking action to identify opportunities for enhancing neighborhoods and business districts. As part of this initiative, we're collaborating with the Manatee County Sheriff's Department, the City of Bradenton, and the Police Athletic League to provide support for improving the area around LECOM. This expansion will not only bring extra-lit publicly accessible ball diamonds and parking, but also significantly boost the local economy and transform the neighborhood by directly benefiting underprivileged youth in the area.
The Manatee County Utilities Department does way more than manage the distribution of clean drinking water. Reliable utilities can attract businesses and industries to our area, contributing to economic growth and job creation. Not only is Manatee County continuing to expand services for our taxpayers with the addition of 75 new lift stations over the next five years, but we're also looking to improve it. We're in the process of constructing Florida's largest low-pressure membrane filtration facility at our Lake Manatee Water Treatment Plant, which will result in consistent water quality. And our spillway replacement project will ensure improved dam safety, enhanced flood management, and increased resilience for anything that Mother Nature throws our way.
Thank you for giving us the chance to provide you with a clear vision for our beautiful county. Please feel free to email any of the commissioners featured in this video by going to mymanatee.org/vision. From our award-winning beaches to the expansion of our convention center, it's with your support that we'll continue to make Manatee County the premier place to live, work, and play.
Good morning, I'd like to bring this meeting to order.
How do I get into this? I just can't.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the rescheduled meeting for January 26, 2024. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please take a moment and silence your phones, it would be appreciated. Ms. Greer and Ms. Schenk, any updates to the agenda from the county attorney's office or from the engineer?
No, Mr. Chairman. No, sir.
Okay. We have had the December 14, 2023 minutes for approval. So this is my first time after 22 years of dealing with this electronically, so it's going to be a little bit of figuring this stuff out. But let's see. We have a motion and we have a second. We can vote now. Can everybody hear me in the back okay? Okay, thanks. Motion passes for the minutes four to nothing. Thank you. Now is the time when we open the public comment up to items for future agenda items, not for anything on today's agenda, but in case anyone in the public would like to have something seen at the planning commission and any future items. So any future agenda items at this time. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Now, we go right into, we have presentations upon a request. Number one is Pace Center for Girls, and I believe we'll have staff read into the record.
Yes, sir. PDO 2341-ZP, Pace Centers for Girls, Bradenton. It's quasi-judicial, and Kevin Oatman is here from staff to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant representative this morning? Okay. Would you like to come forward and make a brief presentation?
Mr. Chairman, we have to disclose ex parte communications.
I was going to do that after, but that's okay. So has anyone, anyone on here at the board have any ex parte communication on this project?
No.
And I'm sorry, it'll be Rosina for staff today.
Okay. Thanks, Rosina. Would the applicant, would the applicant care to make a brief introductory? This is on presentation on request.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stephen.
I'm sorry. Caleb, is that better? Oh, we haven't sworn anyone in. See, after 22 years, I forgot. Would everyone, anyone thinking about talking today, please rise and get sworn in. Even if you're remotely thinking you might get speak, the move to speak, please rise and get sworn in. Thanks, Caleb. Name county residence.
All right, thank you. Stephen Reese, Law Firm, Vicard Merrill. I'm a resident of Manti County, and I'm here on behalf of Pace.
And you have been sworn.
I have been sworn. We have a presentation if the commission would so choose, but otherwise, we're here for answering any questions.
Any questions from the board for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Staff, any questions? Any closing staff presentation at all?
Good morning, Rosina. I'd like to represent the staff and I have been sworn. We agree with all the statements that is in the staff report, and we don't have any concerns about this project.
Any questions or comments?
If you have any questions, we are here to answer the questions.
Any questions or comments for staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this item. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this item, anyone would like to come forward, please come forward, state your name, county residence, and whether or not you've been sworn.
Brian Wilson, Manti County resident. I live at 2611 on 35th Street. Yeah, I have been sworn in. We don't really oppose the rezoning, but the fact that the most western lot is a residential lot, the road is only 16 inches, or 16 feet wide. It's not a standard-sized road. Trash trucks and vehicles coming up the road have to move over into people's lawns. The road's not designed to hold up to 250 cars coming in there in the morning. Their president entrance is on 26th Street, and I want to come up 35th Street. Their traffic study is on 26th Street, not going up 36th Street, which, or 35th Street, rather, sorry. And that's where their new proposed road is to come up 35th Street into the parking lot and then round and out 36th Street. So I would ask that a new traffic study be done and not have an entrance on 35th Street. Keep the entrance on 26th Street. There's a, at the beginning of the road, there's a fire hydrant, and if people are pulling in and out, there's no, there's no room for two cars to get through there. It's just, it's an old 1960s road. It's not designed to take that kind of traffic. I have pictures, and so if you want to see them. All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the board coming forwards, speak for or against this item?
Hi, my name is Dawn Plavak. I'm a Manatee County resident. I'm at 2615 35th Avenue West. I have so been sworn. As with Brian, I just wanted to mention our road because of its size. I've now lived at my home that I purchased four years ago in January. My mailbox has been taken out three times. Just last week, I picked up somebody's side mirror in my lawn. So it's because our road is about the width of one and a half cars. Two cars cannot go down our road side by side. And with this proposed entrance on 35th Avenue West, that is going to bottleneck everything because it looks like it's coming off at 26, turning onto 35th Avenue West, and an immediate turn into their new proposed entrance. If there was a turn lane that they created of their own property, that would alleviate that. But they currently have an entrance on 36th Avenue West, which is a two-lane road. So that's where the residents in our area, right at that entranceway, is requesting that they continue to use their current entrance off of 36th Avenue West and 26th Street, because that road is wider than our current road. Unless they want to work with the county to widen their road and give us sidewalks and give us culverts, we'd be more than happy for that. But that's not likely to happen, so that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to come forward to speak for or against this item?
Yes, my name is Larry Moss. I'm a Manti County resident. My address is 2610 35th Avenue West, and the same thing as everybody else.
And you've been sworn?
Oh, yeah, I've been sworn in. The same as everybody else, the road's just, you know, that road's just not accommodating enough for traffic like that to come down through there. And it's going to back up into 26th Street, and it's going to be a hazard, because once, once the traffic turns on to 20, 35th Street, you only got like 50 feet before you got to turn into the driveway to go into the pace. And it's just ain't going to, they're going to be out in the middle of 26th Street blocking traffic and causing accidents, and there's, and other than that, there's a lot of children on the street, and with that street being that narrow, and all the traffic that's going to create, it's just going to be a disaster. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? For or against? Please come forward, state your name, and whether or not you've been sworn. By the way, as, as, just, we're not looking at you, but that's because today, everything's on our computers in front of us. So the fact that we're staring down here is not that we're not listening to you.
My name Rosalee Mintiliev, and I am resident of 2606 West 35th Avenue West. And my husband, he is eight-two years old.
Sworn?
And he has lots of problems with his health, and we moved just two years ago for quite a nice peaceful life in Florida. We really enjoy it. Everything is good. But the street is really very narrow. If something happened with my husband, it's not able to go to... I? My English not so good. One more. Of course, I am sworn through everything. And it's not able to come if something happened at Fire Department. It's street, it's really narrow. It's impossible to, and we just, it's first house from the corner, almost next to gate. And I think this is the best way when this exit and coming in to way from 36th Street is more wider street, and just make solid fence on 35th Street. It will be really, really convenient for all people who live in our street, in our avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public? Would you like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Staff closing comments? I'm sorry? Did you want to come forward?
Yeah, I want to come forward.
Is there anyone else? Come on down, so that, anybody else want to talk? So we know you're, please state your name, county residence, or whether or not you've been sworn.
Hi, my name is Kidani Trinidad. I'm a resident at Street 2634, 24, 26th Street. My property is actually the corner property, right across where this development is to take place. My dad is actually the homeowner at the resident. We've been there for a couple of years now before the old property got torn away, and this new development is trying to take place. Just like everybody stated prior to me, this street, 35th Avenue, which is my, the corner property right there, that street is a very narrow street. I have myself witnessed multiple car accidents right in the corner of my property, being that there's a fire hydrant right in the corner of the, of the, of the property entrance, which makes the property turn even narrower. So people, sometimes when there's a car right at the exit going towards 26th Street, they have to basically almost go right into the grass in order, because when the other cars are turning, especially a lot of cars like Amazon trucks, people with landscape businesses with trailers, utility trailers, when they're taking that turn, there's literally like no place for them to turn. So mailbox person might themselves even ran into a side of my property sewer where they, you know, where the sewer drains as well. I don't, I think this, this plan needs to be reconsidered, being that there is other entries possible for this school. I believe the, the old school entrance was on 26th Street, and they had another exit on 35th Avenue, on the 36th Avenue. 36th Avenue across the street, which actually my sister resides at, on that other corner property, has a wider capacity for multiple vehicles to be on both sides of the road and a car to be able to go through it. On this other property, the minute there's a line right against 26th Street, not only is it unable for any other car to go through there, but there's also a big safety hazard of anybody that's at that stop sign, being that they have no way to see, they're going to cut a lot of the viewage as far as where they can turn, especially if somebody's trying to get through the school from 26th Street to turn right into that entrance on 35th, and then, you know, just should try to back up traffic right there. It's just a basically, a disaster waiting to happen. So I just wanted to give my opinion and oppose to that entrance on there, just because, like I said, I think there's definitely, there should be definitely way better alternatives, either being 26th Street, which has two lanes on each side, and I'm sure they can, you know, have one of the lanes for that timeframe, hold traffic and be a lot safer, or 35th Avenue where has a wider, has a wider lane where people can park and their cars can still go through. Again, on 35th Avenue, being that this, this older residence and that old, though, sorry.
That's all right. Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public that would like to come forward to speak for or against this item? We'll be closing the public hearing this time. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing. I do have a question for the applicant. Could you clarify why we're having that, that entrance that everyone has a problem with on 35th?
If I could get the overhead against Stephen Reese with Law Firm, Vicard Merrill, on behalf of Pace. So currently, there is an access off of 26 and an access off of 36. The current design now, as before you today, would have a single direction coming off of 35th, mainly for drop-off in the morning and queuing on-site. So actually addressing the concern of queuing into 35th Avenue, this has the capacity to take the queuing on-site. The majority of the entrance and daily visitors would still access via 36 and the additional parking on-site. Your professional staff and transportation did not raise any concerns. In fact, it's, you know, encouraged to take those access points off 26th Street. So be happy to address any other questions you all may have.
So that's for drop-off in the morning and pickup at night, or just drop-off? Or?
If I may, I've got Amy Wickmavis on behalf of Pace who can describe the daily operations.
Good morning, I'm Amy Wickmavis. I'm the executive director of Pace Center for Girls. I live 34, 34211, and yes, I've been sworn in. Thank you so much. So our access, right, we put the queuing on our property so that that would not be an issue, so that the cars can come in. Our daily operations, we serve about 59 girls, many of whom take the bus transportation and are not dropped off, but get in the bus. And so the drop-off will come, we start at 8:00 in the morning, and we're done around 2:00, 2:15 in the afternoon. But we have rearranged all of the side plans so that our cars can stay on-site on our property and then just turn and not back up onto 26th Street. We have been at that property since 1996, and as we know, there are many accidents that happen on 26th Street. We've never had an accident happen on our side entrance at all in the whole time we've been there.
Okay, what time in the morning is drop-off?
Drop-off happens usually between about 7:45 and 8:15 in the morning.
Okay, so it's roughly a half-hour window? It doesn't keep going on all day long?
No, I mean, we have visitors as anyone else would, right.
Parking lot, not the drop-off if they come after that.
Correct, and, and we're Monday through Friday.
Okay. All right, thank you. Staff, closing comments? If any?
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. Nelson Galeano Transportation Planning Staff, I have been served. This, the traffic study that has been submitted is a trafficking package statement for a reason. This traffic study say is a high level in terms of planning. It means the purpose of this study is to evaluate the suitability of the roadway network to support this development on the worst cases scenario. We analyze essentially the thoroughfare roadway network. In other words, we consider essentially what is going on on 26th Street. 20, 35, and 36 are local roads. The access, the accesses will be evaluated at the final site plan stage. It will be considered safety and operational conditions at each access. The width of the roadway needs to be evaluated when the final site plan comes into fruition, and we analyze the information that we will provide for the applicant. And we agree the, it is better not to have an access on 26 due to speed and traffic value that this road has.
Okay, are you asking for any additional right-of-way on 35th?
Not yet. It means when the final site plan comes, I believe we need to analyze this condition.
You can't ask for a right-of-way?
Right now, right now, right now, I believe, it is part of the analysis, the operational analysis on accesses. If they need to have two accesses, one south and one north, perhaps the need of more right-of-way will be an issue. But right now, we are not able to, to, to define if yes or not, essentially, because we don't have any access analysis.
If we don't ask for a right-of-way now, you're not going to get it at the final site plan level. That ship will have sailed.
Chairman?
But no.
No, if they need additional right-of-way to provide a turn lane that is required for their development, then they would have to give that right-of-way.
Okay.
At that time.
Okay. This just allows them to develop the site plan? Yeah. Okay. So the takeaway of that is, just for the public, they haven't studied it deep enough to know if they're going to have to widen that road out a little bit. The next step is the final site plan. At the final site plan level, staff will take a deeper look at it. If that, if that throat needs to be widened, then the applicant will have to comply with that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, anything else from staff? Any questions for staff? Applicant closing comments?
Again, Stephen Reese for the record. No closing comment, other than, you know, before you is a LDC compliant rezoning. It's consistent with your land use plan, your comprehensive plan. There's competent substantial evidence before you, and in the staff report as part of the record today supports the decision, and we just ask for your approval. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. The, the one side of the parking lot does not appear to have a landscape island, and I think it's every nine spaces or something like that. And I'm just curious if it...
Well, I can, if Mr. Chairman would come down. We do have our engineer here today, if necessary. Otherwise, it is another element that will be discussed during final site plan if there's a discrepancy in the code requirements.
Okay. As long as we're approving this.
Chairman Kira with Environmental Planning can answer that question for you.
Good morning, Kara Koenig, Environmental
Good morning, Kara Kaneg, Environmental Planning Section Manager. So there was an LDC text amendment, I believe I approved, was approved around the summer, which now allows up to 15 parking spaces.
Okay, all right, good enough, thank you. All right, anything else?
One, one other question, is, is this the minimum amount of parking required or the maximum or?
We're gonna have our engineer, Chelsea Harity, speak to that.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Harity. I'm a civil engineer with Pinonius Associates. I'm a resident of Pinellas County and I have been sworn in. So according to the code, there really isn't a minimum parking for schools, but the minimum is the number of staff, which right now is 21. Possible plans to increase to 20, 26, and kind of based on the use, and there's 36 spaces available now and that's sufficient for their needs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else for staff or the applicant? I guess could we go up, if it does pass, what would be the next steps for the residents to know that 35th will be handled? It won't come above a public meeting again, I don't think. It will not. FSP is all administrative. I mean, can they, can the, can the residents who are here be notified when the FSP comes through? Can they meet with the representative? Pace, everyone knows Pace, they're here. So I would expect Pace to contact those people in the back.
Yeah, I just spoke with Ms. Wick-Mavis. That's a tongue twister on a Friday morning. Of course, we'll continue to work with the neighbors and let them, keep them apprised of the final site plans and citizen administrative process and work through their concerns.
So when this meeting's over, you three can get with that guy and take him behind a woodshed?
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Chair, Chair Lantino motion? We have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote. Motion passes yes unanimously. Item number two. Item true, staff can read that into the record.
Item number two, ZL 2324, solid rock construction rezone. Solid Rock Construction Group LLC is the owner. It's quasi-judicial and Rosina Leiter is here for staff. It's a rezone of approximately .52 acres, generally located on the south side of Cortez Road and west of Paradise Bay Mobile Home Park.
All right, any other Commissioners have any ex parte communications to reveal?
No, sir.
No, great. Applicant, are you a representative so? Please come forward and brief introduction, this is on presentation on request.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. For the record, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates and I have been sworn. This is a very straightforward, small rezone from PRS to PRM. So nothing's changing in terms of the potential uses. It was rezoned in 2001 to PRS from RSF 4.5, and I don't know why they didn't ask for PRM back then, but you're limited to 3,000 square feet in PRS and there's actually, the site can accommodate up to about 7,900 square feet. So that's what the applicant is, it's a different owner now. That's what we're asking for, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
Staff comments?
Good morning, Rosina Leiter, but staff and I have been sworn. The increase in area that they can have is more or less 4,000 square feet. We consider that this increase in area from the PRS to PRM has not created any additional impacts in anything. The applicant agreed to the schedule of uses in which we limit all the uses that are not allowed with the coastal planning area and also with the uses that doesn't meet commercial criteria, because this specific site doesn't meet commercial criteria. And we remove all the retail uses and only leave the office uses and other uses that are not, require meet commercial criteria. And in terms of transportation, don't gonna be a big impact, the increase. The maximum Florida ratio is 0.35, but the site is really small and this is the maximum they can have, 7,900 square feet of building.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? We'll close the public hearing. Staff closing comments?
No, not this time.
Applicant closing comments? I assume this is gonna be probably a right-in, right-out kind of thing? You're not gonna be looking for a cut, and if you do, you'll deal with the county and figure it out. It's a state road, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. I believe there's a median there now. When I went out to post the sign, I couldn't, I know that they could, you know, I guess they can ask for it, but I think it's right-in, right-out. That's how I had to post the sign, was right-in, right-out.
Anything else, Mr. Schmidt? Nothing?
No, thank you.
All right. Chair Lantino motion? Looks like we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of approving, vote. Motion carries in the annus bili to approve, four, nothing. Thank you. Next item is public hearings, number three. If staff would read number three into the record.
Item number three, PDMU 1616 GR2, Parish Lakes General Development Plan Amendment. It's quasi-judicial. Laura Gonzalez is the planner and is here for staff. It's amending the ordinance to approve a land use exchange and revised general development plan.
All right, is the applicant represented? Please come forward, state your name, county residence, whether or not you've been sworn, and we'll look forward to your presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can I have the overhead? And my name is Clint Cuffel with WRA Engineering, and I have been sworn. 7978 Cooper Creek Boulevard. Like you said, it's not the power point, it's actually the overhead. Perfect, okay. So this is the Parish Lakes DRI. It's an old standing DRI. We started construction on the northern half of the project within the last three years. You guys, you can see by the aerial, the northern half is fully under construction. As part of the DRI, actually, let's give you a location, it's, it's on the south side of Moxawalo Road. Carter Road, actually, we've extended it halfway through the project so far. It's just off I-75, just east of I-75. We're here today because, you know, in the DRI, we have maximum and minimum development totals, and you can trade off some of these land uses in a land use exchange. So in the summary, we, we went through, from a traffic standpoint, and are proposing some land use exchanges, and I'll kind of go through those. There's four or five of them. One is, we're gonna increase, we're proposing to increase the total residential units from 3,300 to 3,401, so it's 101 increase of residential. We're also going to, we're proposing to, the residential mix of density reduced the multifamily from, from 1,100 to 400, and then also, then that would increase the single-family detached from 2,200 to 3,001. So what we're doing is we're trading off multifamily residential for single-family residential, and the total residential is only 101 increase. But I'll go through the commercial. We're proposing to reduce the commercial from 400,000 to 260,000 square feet. Reduce the office from 50,000 to 35,000 square feet. And that's kind of the big land use exchanges that we're proposing today. There's a couple, there's also some minor, you know, North Central Overlay is no longer in existence, so we're cleaning up the ordinance, taking out some of those standards for North Central Overlay. There is one more height adjustment we're proposing, and that's commercial was limited to two stories and we're proposing to limit that now to three stories. You know, some of the commercial uses, now you get to the three-story, three-story mark. That's really the extent of the proposal. It's, it's all approved as during the DRI. Again, we just have to do this GDP amendment to document any land use exchanges that's approved through the DRI. So this is GDP amendment, kind of memorializes that. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Any questions for the applicant at this point? Where are you, where are you reducing the buffer from 50 to 30 feet?
So as part of the North Central Overlay, the, the buffer was required to be 50 feet along Moxawalo Road and along Carter Road through the middle of our site.
Okay. So it was a function of the overlay district that made it 50. Got rid of the overlay district, so we don't need it to be 50 anymore, it can be 30.
That's correct. And we've actually, to be honest, we've actually already built the 50-foot on the first part of Carter Road. It's already under construction, it's already built. It's just when we go to the future phases, if the NCO is not there, we clean that up and 30 foot's required.
You have a land use equivalency matrix for traffic that addresses these changes?
Yeah, there's a very, yeah, it's in the DRI, the land use equivalency matrix about trading trips and everything, and that's why we got to these numbers.
Right.
It's all...
Won't require another traffic study or anything because they're just trading off development? Is that generally correct?
That's correct. It's the CLOS that still remains intact is not violated by these exchanges.
Okay. All right, any questions for the applicant?
Just one quick one, just the, is it mostly market conditions that you're making the exchanges, especially the multifamily and single-family?
Yeah, exactly. And this, you know, this part of Manti County, you know, the single-family detached is really the driving this market. There's a little, there's some multifamily out here, but mainly the, the single-family, it's market-driven by, you know, the single-family detached market in this, in this area.
Okay, and also the reduction in office and...
Commercial, yeah, the, the commercial node, we do have, you know, still 260,000 square feet of commercial, still a pretty heavy size of commercial. So we've, the corner, these two corners up here on the Carter Road and Moxon is really where that commercial node will be. We started construction on that already and, you know, 400,000 was, was, was more than we needed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would just, I just think for the record, if the applicant could address the buffer on other thoroughfare roads that are on the property also, such as Sawgrass and Road EE to ensure that the buffer is being changed on those also?
Okay.
Yeah, so we have, Sawgrass is right now being constructed just off our property to the east. We then pick it up, take it across Buffalo Canal and take it into Erie Road. And I, I have a...
Yeah, there's a GDP somewhere.
Yeah, GDP. I'll pull up the GDP, it's easier to see. So those buffers, again, those were similar 50-foot previously. Okay, there, you can see that better. So this is Sawgrass, comes, we, we meet up with it at Summer Woods and we take it down to Erie. That's also going from, you know, the buffer on that was from, was 50 feet for the NCO, and now we're proposing 30 feet because NCO is no longer in existence. And then Carter Road is actually already constructed to here from, from Moxawalo. We've actually kept, we've built the 50-foot buffer there already, and then from down to here, we've proposing the 30-foot. And then Road EE is, connects Sawgrass to Carter Road.
All right, thank you. Mr. De La Sline, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Well, I thought you had a question. Any, any other questions for the applicant? All right, staff presentation?
Hi, good morning, this is Laura Gonzalez, and I have been sworn. Okay, I agree with the applicant presentation, so I will only highlight the most relevant aspects of this proposal. The request is for a GDP amendment. This is the second GDP amendment for the Parish DRI, mixed development use, development that was approved in 2017. The applicant is proposing to change the balance of the current entitlements using the land use equivalency matrix, and I will over this shortly, as well as the other minor changes or other changes that, that the applicant has explained, the removal of the North Central Overlay, the increase of the maximum height of commercial, commercial buildings, the reduction in the landscape buffers, and some changes in the access points. The future land use category is the mixed use PSP1 that correspond to a FPL Eastment, the Sony East PDMU. This is the original GDP that was approved in 2017 with a total of 3,300 residential units, 400,000 square feet of commercial, and 50,000 square feet of office uses. Based on the conversion factor of the land use equivalency matrix, the proposal increases the number of single-family units in 971 units and the town home type in 30 units. In detriment of all the other residential product types and especially of the commercial entitlements that are reduced to the amount of 260,000 square feet, that is the minimum allowed in the land use equivalency matrix, and the office uses are reduced to 35,000 feet, that is very close to the minimum allowed in the land use equivalency matrix. The net increment of the 101 dwelling units is assigned to parcel C6 that it is located south of EE Road, let me show you, and to the east of the DRI. No changes are proposed to the location of the commercial parcels A1 and A2, south of Moxon Walo Road at the intersection with Carter Road. The applicant prepared a trip generation comparison showing that the trips generated by the new balance of residential product types and commercial entitlements do not exceed the approved trips for the currently approved GDP, and no changes to traffic mitigation are required. The school concourse analysis prepared by Manati County School Districts confirms that adequate capacity is or will be in place to serve the project, and also the review of other county agencies based on this review, water and sewer services will be available to, or are available. The proposed gross density is 3.1 dwelling units per acre for the entire DRI, and the Florida ratio is .14 within the maximum gross density and Florida ratio allowed in the mixed use, future land use category. So these are the other requirements, the removal of the North Central Overlay that is consistent with the approval of the board in 2022, the increase of the maximum height of commercial buildings from 30 feet to stories to 40 feet, three stories, and when adjacent to residential uses, the projects are complying with the Section 301.5 Building Height Compatibility. Their proposal is to reduce, and the applicant has covered this part, the buffer with adjacent to the thoroughfairs, and also there are some changes to the, in the access. Based on the analysis of the proposal presented in the staff report, staff finds the request to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and the applicable requirements of the Land Development Code with the proposed stipulations. Compliance with these requirements and all applicable standards of the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan will be reviewed in detail at time of the preliminary site plan, final site plan applications. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point?
Yes, sir.
Mr., no?
Yeah.
Anything? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on this project. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Staff closing comments? Any, none? Applicant closing comments? Good morning, Mr. Grimes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Caleb Grimes with Grimes Galvano, and I have been sworn. I just wanted a couple of very minor points. Appreciate everything you've said. As you can see, it's a very minor change. It's a change based on what was envisioned in doing the DRI. It's why we do equivalency matrices and, and set it up so we can make these kind of exchanges. It was approved almost eight years ago and, and markets change as you pointed out. But I, I just wanted to, to make one comment. There was a table that was referenced that showed the number of units in each section in C6, C5, C4, C3. We have confirmed with staff and we've reviewed our code that, that it is, it is acceptable to make adjustments within there without changing the total numbers, and, and that is something that is... And, uh, and that is something that is normally done, done administratively and reviewed at, uh, FSP times. So just wanted you to know that as, as it goes forward, a development of that size, you make your best guesses on those little sections and they will be adjusted. Uh, other than that, uh, appreciate it, uh, uh, your approval of it, a recommendation of approval.
Mr. Grimes, I do have a question. There's a, there's a school site shown on the southwest corner. It doesn't look like there's any access from Sawgrass to that school site. Is the school site just going to take access off of Erie? Or we know?
The, the answer to that is that, uh, we are actually working with staff, uh, for an. No, you, you're talking, he's talking about the off-site school site.
Yeah, on the southwest corner? I would think the school district would rather enter off of Sawgrass, not on Erie, but I'm, it's just a question.
Oh, what, are you talking about here?
I don't know, I'm not.
This future school?
Yes.
Yes, that's off of Carter, not Sawgrass.
I mean Carter, I apologize.
Yes, okay.
So, yes, Carter, I apologize.
Yes. Uh, we are actually working with staff right now to, uh, expedite the construction of Carter Road to have that as a, a new good reliever road, uh, north-south. And as part of that, uh, we have, you can see something shaded here that talks about changing of access points would be a, would be allowed. And the reason for that is we are, they, we are working with staff to actually, at this point, put a roundabout in that would give access to the school site, to us, and, and be a very good way to, to move the traffic at that point. Uh, so that will actually, the, an agreement on that will be coming back before you in the future. But you have pointed something out that is, uh, very accurate and which we are working closely with.
But you don't need another entrance point? Because if it's not shown here, you won't get another one, right? So you're okay with just those two in that southwest corner?
Uh, the, the, the answer, the answer to that is that, uh, as we work with staff, we're going to have to adjust the access points. We know that.
You have enough of them.
And we have a provision in here that, uh, with approval of the county engineer, that the number of access points can be adjusted on Sawgrass or Carter, not out on Moxon Wallow Rice. So you're, all good points and ones that we have been working very closely with staff on.
All right, my final question is on, on Sawgrass, where presently keeps going in dead ends, is that just a little stick of county right-of-way that sticks up in there?
I'm not sure where you're talking about, north or south?
If Sawgrass goes north and it just kind of dead ends up there.
Right here?
No, no, the black line, the black line.
Oh, that black line?
Yeah.
That's not Sawgrass. Sawgrass is the white line.
So what's the black line mean?
I can answer that for staff if you like. There is an existing road there now, and that's where it is, but it will be realigned.
Okay, and it'll be, so that right-of-way will get vacated, given back to them most likely?
Yes, if it is actual right-of-way.
I go nowhere.
Yeah, I mean, it, I'm not sure if it's actual right-of-way or not, but.
Road there, there's.
But yes, it is a road there and it will be realigned.
Okay.
Um, and then also, just as early as yesterday, I had a meeting with the county engineer regarding Carter and the access to the school. To be completely transparent, they may have two access points onto Carter.
The school might.
The school might.
That's why I'm asking, do you have enough black arrows shown?
Yes.
I'm, you, I'm told we do, so.
The, the, Tiberia, as you can see, Carter is planned to extend along the property line of that. So they will have access to it. They would be coming in with their own zoning issues.
I didn't want you running into the problem because there's no black arrow showed there. And then you come in and someone down the road and says, anyway, you get the point. So, all right, thank you, Mr. Grimes, that's all I have.
It is a good point, and it is one that we were concerned with and have actually been working with, uh, staff, Ms. Greer with it and, uh, to assure that. And, and from a practical standpoint, the, the agreements on what we're trying to do with Carter Road to advance it, it's actually going to come back before the board anyway, so.
Okay, all right. Anything else for the applicant? Thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Everyone may now vote. Motion passes unanimously four to nothing for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, if staff would please read item number four into the record.
Item number four, PDR twenty-three thirteen ZP. East, East Lynn, four-one-one Ryro Road Holdings LLC. Four-one-one Ry Holding, Ry Road Holdings LLC. Donald and Linda Temple, Donald, Donna King, Donna King and Sharon Laney. I may have just totally messed that name up, sorry. Weekly Homes LLC is the contract purchaser, and this is quasi-judicial. Rosina Leiter is here, um, for planning. It is a rezone of approximately twenty-five acres, generally located on the southeast side of Ry Road, approximately one point two-five miles from the intersection of State Road sixty-four and Ry Road.
All right, any planning commissioners have any ex parte communications that they need to reveal at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have the applicant here. Good morning, Mr. Rudisil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Scott Rudisil. I have been sworn, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, David Weekly Holmes. And with me today, I've got Clint Cuffel, our project engineer, David J. with David Weekly Holmes, and Steve Henry, our, our traffic engineer on the project. Uh, this is an aerial showing the location of the site. As was mentioned, it's on the east side of Ry Road, just north of State Road sixty-four. Uh, the project is approximately twenty-five acres. And you can see it, the area around the site has been transitioning into predominantly single-family residential development. Our request is to rezone from A to PDR with a preliminary site plan, uh, for seventy-five single-family lots. This entire area of the county is designated UF three on the future land use map. And so the request is in line with the maximum density allowed in that category, as well as with the density that's been approved on other projects in that area. Uh, you can see we have ponds and floodplain compensation area and a fifteen-foot perimeter buffer surrounding lots, which provides for good separation. Um, we do have two specific approval requests on the project. Uh, the first is to allow for a ten-foot secondary front yard. And, uh, the second request relates to the, um, the agricultural setback. There's not currently any active agricultural adjacent to the site. We do have a provision in there that if there is active agriculture, um, at final site plan, that in lieu of the thirty-five-foot setback, we will provide a twenty-five-foot wide landscape buffer with fencing. This is a zoning map. As was mentioned, uh, this site's currently zoned A, and you can see, um, the PDR surrounding the site. And this project is right in line with those development trends. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clint to get into the project design details.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, again, Clint Cuffel with WRA Engineering, and I have been sworn. Uh, I'll go through the, the site details here. As you said, seventy-five, seventy-five single-family detached lots. With the open space being required at twenty-five percent, we're showing a little over thirty percent open space. Um, we did, we do have sidewalks proposed all along Ry Road. There is a school, uh, just off the screen to the north. So we are, um, in contact with the school board and making sure we have sidewalks in the front. Uh, we're within the future development area boundary, uh, with utilities right on, out on front on Ry Road. And we're in the basin where we do have to have fifty percent reduction in these discharge for the stormwater. So we'll be implementing that on this project. Here's a couple, uh, David Weekly Holmes is the home builder, um, for this site. Here's a couple of building elevations that they're, um, proposing to, on the site. So it's, it's a good product for the area. It'll, it'll kind of match also the, the surrounding development patterns. And that's really the, the extent of the design, and we're here to answer, uh, any questions that you may have, um, on the project.
Thank you, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? Are you proposing any kind of a tot lot or anything here, a gazebo or anything, or nothing at all?
We, right, we haven't got into those details. We will have some kind of, uh, down here in the other side, actually, let me see if I can point. See the area that's where the road, the road curves and there's a bunch of green space there? We haven't decided exactly what's going to go there. We have a lift station next to it, but, um, we will be proposing. And we also have a green space up, as you see, we're around the cul-de-sac. We have a green space there. We haven't decided, you know, it could be a tot lot, could be a gazebo that surrounds that pond.
I, I would recommend if this goes on to the county commission, you might address that, just say, future, possible, whatever there. So I don't, the question doesn't get raised.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anything else for the applicant at this point?
Yes, sir.
Staff presentation.
The applicant covered the majority of the aspect. The site is located with the UF three, and is, uh, the proposal is with the trends in the area. To the north is an existence subdivision and not immediately adjacent to the east. There is another subdivision, but, uh, the site is surrounded by A properties. The applicant did a very good job. You, they provide, uh, along the main, and I don't know if I can use your presentation to explain, uh, the site plan. They are proposing thirty percent open space. Uh, can you go to the site plan, Jenny, please? Okay. Along to the frontage, they have, um, stormwater, um, facilities as long to the east, to the west. And to the south, they have another, um, big stormwater pump. And the floodplain compensation going to be a kind of focal point is what is pointed in the staff report. We don't know, uh, what amenity they're going to propose, but at least they, they pointed in the site that they're going to have a focal point that people probably can walk around. The lots are a little bigger to the trends right now in the area because the minimum lot is five thousand one hundred and the maximum is six thousand. And they have the provision along to the, how is this, to the east with the property that they have the buffer fifteen feet plus ten additional feet if it's a time of an asset plan, any agriculture activities over there. We don't have any concerns, and we think that is providing more than the regular, um, subdivision that we are having in the last few months. I don't know if you have any questions?
Uh, any questions for staff at this point?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Schenk, good morning.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chair. The transportation stipulations, uh, legal view indicate they should be deleted D one through D five. These are notes that could be on a site plan or their co-requirements. We don't only include those as stipulations.
Staff, you aware of that change?
Yes, that is correct, and going to be deleted from, um, the staff report for the board.
Okay, applicant, you heard that? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schenk. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Please come forward, state your name, whether or not you've been sworn, and your county residence.
Hello, my name's Jeff Prater. I'm a resident in Manti County. I live at one-five-two-five Waterline Road. I have been sworn in. Why I'm before you today is because this property, if somebody wants to go ahead and put back up the, uh, the plat.
Get the site plan back up?
My property backs up to this property. I'm not here to, uh, I'm not against the development of it. I'm just here to point out some facts that need to be addressed by you all before they do it. And specifically the drainage. I've got photo presentation here, and, um, I can, I'm easier to talk about it with pictures than I am, so I can support it. How do I do this? Do you want me to?
Well, you, you, yeah, the best way is to lay it there. Any, anything that you present to us today has to stay with us.
That's fine, I got it.
Okay.
Let's do it one at a time. Okay. So this is my front yard right now, not right as we speak, but this was the December rain we just went through. If y'all remember, we had a pretty good downpour. So you can see across the road, now this is Waterline Road. They're, they're proposed behind me. But when you develop, you all understand that we need somewhere for this water to absorb. What I see right now is a Mill Creek watershed isn't able to handle any more runoff unless something is proposed or done to it before any more development takes place in this area. Here's proof, I mean, you can't, I don't know if I'm the only one that has that issue. And I do come because the people around me are moving away from this because of the development that's going on. The second picture is a land that backs up to it also, which is ten acres right beside mine. And you can see how that water's retained there. Now, when I, I've just built this home in two thousand and twenty-one, my home. And I did build it up, built it up to the standards of what the county requires. But until the hurricanes came in the last couple of years, did I realize that the amount of water that comes down that road, Waterline's is a real good name for it, because that's what it is. But then again, if you're going to build a new development right behind me, that water's got to go somewhere. Now, they, they do have the retention ponds, okay? But water seeks its slowest point, so if their ponds have water in it so, to the depth of my land, guess where it's going to come? Back over on my land. The second thing is the amount of traffic flow that is there now. So they proposed seventy-five homes. That's probably another hundred and fifty cars you're adding to the area. You assume most homes have two cars today. It right, when I leave my home and turn onto Ry Road off of Waterline Road, I take my life in my own hands daily. There's nothing but a stop sign there. So I know I'm done.
Anything to, anything to finish up, or?
Well, the rest of my photos and stuff, and I didn't, this is my first time ever coming before you. So I went back, I understand the comprehensive plan, I'm a real estate broker. I came from the mining from West Virginia, so I understand the environment and stuff. So the rest of my picture are the animals that live on that land, such as these deer, the turkey. It's being shoved out, we even have a panther within ten-mile radius of us now. I have a photo of it because I have a friend that had a trail cam that picked it up. But it was also announced in the news last week, so you know I'm not just coming off of this. The last thing I want to say, the development that's going on, I hate when they clearcut it. I have photos of these dust storms that are created when you all clearcut that. And one way to prevent that is, two ways. You got to have plenty of water trucks around, because I know I've had to deal with that personally in my last profession. But another way is to drill a well. And add some water lines out there to keep these things damp when they're doing it. Because I know that they're, take that away, it's going to blow onto my property, which I have open pools, open windows, I'm done.
If, if, the, the things you showed us will have to stay here?
Uh, that's fine, I'll give it to you. I prepared a whole speech, I just didn't know what was going to go on, how long I had.
They will be available to you at the county commission meeting.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item?
Anyone else in the public would like to come forward to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Staff closing comments? No, no comments from staff? Applicant closing comments, and I'm sure you're going to want to talk about traffic and storm.
Yes, that, thank you again, Clint Cuffel with WRA Engineering. I am a professional engineer and I have been sworn. So yes, this site does have floodplain. And we do have a, county has applied a Mill Creek watershed study to us. It's actually a two-D study, which is very tough to deal with, but we, we have been working on that, working with that. And like I said, uh, one of the, one of the key points I mentioned is we have to, we have to do fifty percent reduction in peak discharge from our site. So with, with this site, we are putting this into the Mill Creek watershed, uh, model. Uh, we'll be, we'll be representing this to the county, that our site is not having, having any adverse impact. And in fact, we'll have to show that we're actually improving the general area of where the water leaves our site. The site plan that I showed.
Where is the outfall?
The outfall, there's actually a little creek system that comes up through here. That's what separated that floodplain comp area. I could show you. I could show you.
Okay.
Oh, you'll pull up my presentation, let me see. The creek system comes up through here and comes in and leaves, there's actually a cross culvert of Ry Road right here. So that's why you see this floodplain compensation on the other side of the creek system, because we're filling in part of it on the north side. This whole area down here is for floodplain compensation.
Does it drain to the north?
Yeah, drains to the north.
It drains to the north? Your property drains to the north?
Yeah. Like I said, we will be supplying all this very detailed information. We've gotten through it pretty detailed so far. And we're showing that the site, the site will work as, as it's designed and meet the county's requirements, swift mud requirements for the stormwater.
When this is over, it might be good for you to get with the gentleman and explain what the 50% reduction in floodplain, floodplain comp, and those kind of things. So he has a little, you know, he's up to speed when he speaks in front of the board, or has better knowledge about.
Yeah, I'll get his information, talk to him for sure.
Mr. Chair? Could you, for the record, just speak to any off-site runoff that comes onto your site and how you must address it?
Yes, so we have, from the, from the south, we do have stormwater runoff that does come across, you know, through this ditch system. And so we are not touching the ditch system, keeping it natural, keeping it as is. And then, like I said, we're filling in the north side of it, is where there's floodplain, and then compensating on the south side. But any, any off-site runoff that comes on our site, we're either routing it around it, around our site, or incorporating it into the site plan. That's why you see the break of the lots, and we're keeping that all natural.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Storm? Let's talk about traffic for a moment.
Steve Henry Links is here to discuss traffic.
Morning, Steve Henry Links and Associates. We did the traffic analysis for the project. And for this one, we did a, a traffic impact statement, which is just kind of a snapshot in time of, of the conditions. But what we'll do is, a part of the FSP, we'll have to do a detailed traffic analysis for it to look at from a concurrency standpoint. And then we'll also have to do an operational analysis to look at the access and to figure out what turn lanes and what operational improvements may be necessary to be able to allow the project to operate acceptable level of service.
Yeah, because right now, I don't, there's no turn lanes proposed, but when you do the analysis, it will determine if you do need to add a turn lane or whatever.
Correct.
You'll just have to modify Pond 1 and Pond 4 as necessary to accomplish.
Whatever we need to do to be able to provide those turn lanes is necessary for the operational analysis.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff and/or applicant? Mr. Rudisil, any closing comments? No? Chair, I want to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, we also be-
Ms. Schenk?
The motion with the alternative stipulations deleted. Stipulations D1 through D5 would be deleted.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Delezline, which takes into account your changes to the stipulations.
Yes.
We are looking for a second. We have a second? All those, oh, we may go ahead and vote now. I used to have to say that. I don't have to anymore. Motion to approve passes 4 to nothing, I'm, 4 to 0. Sir, I encourage you to get with the, the engineer, their engineer outside and, and let him give you some. Thank you. All right, last item. All right, is there one more? Staff?
I said that, didn't I?
Item number five?
Okay.
Item number five. LDC T 2317, ordinance 24-02, County Initiated Land Development Code text amendment, electric vehicle charging stations. It's quasi judicial, and Charles Andrews is here for staff.
Hi, good morning, Charles Andrews with staff, and actually, I have not been sworn.
It's legislative.
Oh, I don't need, oh, it said quasi judicial. Oh. Oh, sorry, never mind. Charles Andrews hasn't been sworn, but I'm okay. So let me get the staff report up real quick. I mean, the presentation, excuse me. Need more coffee this morning. Okay, so before you, we have a Land Development Code text amendment. This is for EV, electric vehicle charging stations. And I'm going to run through a brief presentation on that. So what exactly is happening? So in Florida right now, we are the, the second in the US for EV registration, just at over 58,000 registered vehicles. In Manatee County, we currently have 20 EV charging stations, or 52 charging ports. That's one port per car. And you'll see the outline there in the yellow, so we're the second. The Californians first. Let's see. So why the need to evolve? So in looking, going through and doing some research on this, there's a lot of motor vehicle manufacturers are looking to go full electric by certain deadlines, 2030, for example, GM, et cetera. And then others have evolved through this. So we have several examples up here in the presentation, such as Orlando, City of Miami Beach, Coral Gables, providing regulations for electric vehicle infrastructure and requirements. So a background here, market projections show, whoops. Market projections, projections show by 2030 that at least 30% of registered vehicles will be, will be powered by electric. So this text amendment is being proposed to address the growing trend in electric vehicle operation and utilization to meet that demand. Overview on the changes, Chapter 2, we're providing some definitions to establish electric vehicles and related infrastructure into the LDC, or Land Development Code. And these are the definitions we're looking at doing, they're part of your packet. You'll notice two definitions I've highlighted. One is EV capable, which talks about parking spaces that would prepare for the future installation of electric vehicle supply equipment, or EVSE, by providing a dedicated conduit to the EV space. And then the EVSE, sorry, acronyms here. Electric vehicle supply equipment, it basically means a unit of fueling infrastructure that supplies electric energy for the recharging of electric vehicles, plug-in hybrids, electric vehicles, motorcycles, and fuel cell vehicles. The other change here is we're looking to Chapter 10, which is transportation management. This is addressing the number of vehicle parking spaces required. It provides clarification. There, there is one note that we did find. We're providing a reference for required handicap parking spaces. That kind of came up just as a little cleanup here as part of this text amendment. The main item here is 1005.3, which speaks to the number of vehicular parking spaces that's required. We're providing a section E for that, to provide minimum development standards. And then, in addition to that, we also have, providing the minimum parking spaces, spaces, Table 10-3.1 regarding this proposal. And then, Chapter 10 here, we've got a, a layout here of what we're looking at for 2% for different land uses and everything. And this is, this is meant more for medium, larger scale development, not the little guys, so to speak. So you'll look at community services here, and this was reviewed against our Table 10-2, which speaks to the different land uses. And, and looking at the 2%. And that 2% came from the other jurisdictions here. I'm going to go back real quick. Across here, you'll see the highlighting here with the different cities that have implemented this, these requirements here at 2% for parking spaces would be set up for these. And then, like I said, we just kind of looked at Table 10-2 with the different uses under each land use category, and then provided those where they begin at that threshold. So the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. And we're looking at, I guess, transmittal or approval here of the, the text amendment going forward, the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm, I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Schenk?
I just want to point out, just for, for your information, I know you're just voting because this is the comp plan. Bobby telling the board, there are a number of proposed bills for Florida Legislature that expressly preempt the regulation of EV charging stations to the state. And they also have a different definition for electrical vehicles than what we use here. And it's impossible at this point with a moving target, three or four, five different bills pending, whether we can say at this point whether they're going to be preempted or not. So I'll just tell the board they have an option of waiting to see what the state does, or if they adopt this, they might have to amend or repeal it later. Just FYI.
Mr. Delezline?
Nothing. I mean, what, I get the sense of government overreach here, telling me what kind of parking spaces I need to do and put in conduits and all of that. If the people who come to my shopping center don't come to my shopping center because there's no place to charge their cars, then they won't come to my shopping center. That's none of the government's business. So that's probably why people up in Tallahassee are thinking, well, it sounds like government overreach to me, telling me what I got to do for my parking stations. So I'm probably going to be opposed to this, just because I'm opposed to government overreach all the time. So it's any of your, none of the government's business if I put in electric charging stations or not.
I think that applies to parking, too. Like developers are going to put in the appropriate amount of parking, not too much, not too little. I mean, it's same kind of thing to me is, and we do have regulations on number of parking spaces, but you're not going to underpark because same reason. So I'm okay with this.
Well, I'm okay with requiring parking spaces. I'm not okay with requiring the conduit, requiring this, requiring that, requiring a certain number of parking spaces for EV. Next week, it'll be a certain number of parking spaces for pickup trucks, and then a certain number of parking spaces for vans. And it's none of the government's business. Do they tell me that for my parking, my parking lot, I need to have a gas station? So that if I pull in and I need gas, I can have a gas station every parking lot? No. So I'm, I'm just, it smells a little bit of government overreach to me, which I just going to fight against every chance I can.
Any other questions or comments?
And if I may, Chairman, Charles Andrews, again, for the record. I do have the definitions put up here. And, and the reason behind this text amendment, in addition to being kind of proactive of where we're going with market trends and whatnot, is that by providing, there's different ways of doing this. So you could do EV capable, which is just laying the conduit. So once the, once you're developing the site, and this does not apply to redevelopment. So I'll be crystal clear on that. So this is all new development, reaching certain thresholds, you know, 250 or 50 under certain land uses. But the idea is to save money for the developer long-term. And what that means is, if you have the conduit laid in, and you have 2%, whatever that may be, maybe it's 100 spaces, say you have two spaces, for example, it would just be flagged EV capable. So down the road, if they want to, they don't have to tear up a half a million, or whatever it may cost, to rip up part of that parking infrastructure and run a line to provide for that.
But isn't that their business? That's their business, not your business. Are you going to pay, are you going to pay them to put those pipes in? Are you going to reimburse them for that cost, since you want it and they don't? No.
And there's one great example.
We're going to agree to disagree, and I'm going to fight against government overreach, and we'll see what happens.
Okay. And one, one final point, Chairman, if I may, is Allington Outlet Malls has a number of those spaces, and when people do park there, if they choose to go there and utilize that facility, they go over, they're charging, and they're using the, the site. They're, they're using, they're, they're conducting business on site with that. So that's, that's one thing, can I, could kind of serve as an attractor.
Was that because of government telling them to do that, or did they do that?
I think they, they perceive it as a luxury that I can go to that shop and charge my car for free. Or, I don't know even if they charge.
The market provided that, not the government.
I agree. I understand.
All right. Chair, I want to entertain a motion, one way or the other. We have a motion to approve. Ms. Kebba made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? It appears the motion to approve is going to fail for lack of a second. Do we have a motion to, well, I don't, do we deny, or we just don't? What do we do, Ms. Schenk, technically?
Just don't pass it through.
Motion deny, there it is. We have a motion by Minister Delezline. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Prosser. All those, you may vote now. The motion to deny passes 3 to 1. I believe that's the end of our, of our official meeting. Is there any closing comments from any planning commissioners? Staff closing comments? County attorney?
Nothing.
Engineer? All right, the over/under, sorry. We are now adjourned.